Let's get this started, our first planning commission meeting for the new year. We're going to wrap things this year and we're going to start off with a new director. And so we have Mark and Mark's going to introduce himself to us.
Bill, amazingly welcome, well welcomed, so thank you. If you know nothing about me or anything, I started yesterday. Today is my second day, first planning commission meeting. I'm the new community development director. Yeah, there was a retirement funding that encouraged, you probably know. Acquisition and I was fortunately hired, feel great to be here. I, this is my third and final state. Started in, grew up and started in California. And went to school, started my career, ended up in Idaho. And after almost 10 years there, ended up in Washington. Started by Snuff County. And came out, had a great experience working with the Army with the watershed forum. And really I fell in love with Washington, learned about the raining, decided I'm never leaving. And I've worked in various capacities in Washington. Through everyone for a loop, the mayor decided not to run for a fifth term. I was on a two day hike on the Pacific Crest Trail. Governor of California closed the trail, come back to Snuff County and then Baywatch Island, swim. Most recently, Sydney and Newcastle and then now very fortunate. Lots of experience as director of planning at Washington. Know your consultant for your comp plan. Have worked for, with communities of similar size and character. And look forward to the form work figure. And starting it right away. As in yesterday.
Yeah.
So feel welcome and fortunate.
Very good. And have you had a chance to meet with Christina?
Well, we set something up, we're going to meet Thursday morning.
Great, 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 great. Very good, yeah, you're being thrown right into the front end of our comp plan, you know, revisions. And we're excited to have you, I was part of Mark's interview committee. And one thing that impressed me was the amount of experience that he's had and how well he understands and knows the community. And I have the strong sense that he, well, he doesn't live in Lake Forest Park, it's a, you know, bought into the vision and values of our community, so.
That's the most important part that I left out, last June, September, I got married. And live in Renton.
Very good, well, we're very excited to have you. And with that, I think we'll move on with our, with our agenda. So we'll start with our land acknowledgement, does anyone want to read the first part and go on to this?
No, thank you.
I can't wait to have this conversation.
We'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today.
Okay, and did everyone have a chance to look at the agenda, are we missing anything or?
I just have a question, I don't know if it's a new agenda item or it doesn't have to be a short, right? It, it's just regards to the overall planning and keeping track of some of the questions that are being raised in each of these meetings, they're shown in the notes, but how tracking whether or not this question is being addressed? I don't know if that's a conversation that needs to be had or, you know, if it's just a question during the old business.
Oh, yeah, no, so that's a good question. The part of, there are two agenda items outside of what we're doing with Christina today have to do with some of that tracking, one is bringing the land acknowledgement discussion forward that was requested. And then the discussion of the comprehensive plan updated schedule was looking at when are we going to be following up on things relative to the comp plan. So are you thinking of an item that's outside of the comp plan that's been lost?
No, it's just about the comp plan.
Yeah, I have, yeah, same.
Okay, okay.
So this is an agenda item, that second agenda item is for us to discuss, like where do we potentially need extra meetings? When, you know, are there things that we would like to do as a group to better prepare ourselves for conversation? What kind of time and space do we need for some of this conversation? So that we're not only learning from Christina, but we're having an opportunity to discuss among ourselves items that we feel like we need that kind of space for. So does that?
I think it does.
Okay, all right, all right, well then could I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please? I move to adopt the agenda as written, second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Oh, welcome Melissa and Councilmember Bodie and Ashton.
Hello.
Hi there.
Thank you.
Sorry, we just, we're so excited to see Mark, we went right into hearing all about him. Okay, with that, our agenda is approved, what about meeting minutes? Did everyone have a chance to read through those? Can I get a motion to bring them to the table, please? My teachers, my teachers, thank you. All right, so first, oh, a first by Yanni and a second by Lois. Okay, super, were there any changes or edits?
I have one.
Yeah.
It's notes page three, packet page five, if you have the hard copy packet. Second paragraph, line 19, it just mentions that I raised something, it's just not, it's not accurate, but it also isn't that relevant. I'd like to strike the last sentence where it says Commissioner Cane provided his opinion on why the rental housing rates are high. I was actually talking about short-term rentals and why I don't think that's a big issue here. Just, but I don't think it's that relevant, it's easier to strike than to edit. People are okay with that.
Where's that one at?
Last, last sentence of the second paragraph on notes page three, line 18, 19. Page three lines 18, 19, yeah. It's just one sentence and I would just, I get rid of it.
Any other comments?
I have a couple corrections, page two, line 31. I think it would read better if you wrote work from home are currently not being well trapped. Then second, under typo, page three, line 28, Commissioner Lee suggested.
Thank you.
And then Nick, procedural question, I remember when I first started, there was some conversation about, you know, meeting minutes and I value this input, but is this the right form for some of the text edits we have? Or is it better to do it already?
No, we can discuss it in open session.
Okay.
And you can vote on there as amended.
Sounds great, any other comments or changes? All right. We have to do another motion to do as amended.
You can just go on as amended.
All those in favor of adopting the meeting minutes as amended, say aye. Ashton and Melissa, can you hear us okay if we're not projecting?
Yeah, I can hear you, yeah.
Super, all right, we will move along to our next meeting date. We'll also have some conversation about meeting dates. Let's see, public comments, we've got some lovely visitors in the room, what say you, visitors? Let's see, Jeff, would you like to speak first?
I'm happy to do that, is that okay?
Sure, if you'll come up and state your name, your address, our whole nine yards.
So I'm Jeff Stedden, live at 15415 Beach Drive Northeast. They first part residence since 1983. And I'm representing the neighbors who live on Northeast 155th and 153rd South LeBottle Way. And those that live on Beach Drive, all of the foot of Blashetta Creek in Maine, I assume most of you are familiar with that. And we're concerned about a townhome development there at 3803 Northeast 155th. That's one, one unit down, one property down from the share market. It says right on the repeat, right on top of the beat, in fact, it says next door to 39, 3829 Northeast 155th, or in 1997, there was a really serious landslide, almost toppled the whole home into the creek, created the dam, threatened the homes downstream. The property is, the steep slope, it's in a steep slope landslide and area, it's a critical area, the creek is an F-class stream, it's associated with 150-foot buffer. The steep slope is associated with a 50-foot buffer and a 15-foot setback. The developer who wants to build a 11-unit townhome on this property wants the buffer's plane. And we oppose that, the neighbors oppose that, both that, but more important, the property is own, Southern Gateway Corridor. The comprehensive plan and municipal code says SGC is a mixed community residential commercial development, describing commercial as retail sales, commodities, business offices, and uses rendering professional services, personal destruction services such as real estate insurance brokerage consultants, medical, dental, clinics, technical training, health clubs. And that the business units from a design perspective must be separated by south of walls, floors, equipment and utilities and other suitable features. The developer is asserting that they meet that standard with six units that they call live work. Now, live work is not found anywhere in the municipal code, it's not found in any of the land use work that you guys are going to be working on. There's no such definition for that. In fact, the architectural renderings that we have show the work area in these six units to be between 61 and 120 square feet. And the rendering shows a desk and three chairs. The rest of the floor, these are three-floor kind of townhomes. The rest of the floor shows a kitchen, counter couch seating, a dining area, a living room, sofa, a chair and a TV. The total work area is less than 5% of the total square footage of each of the units. And we would believe that the, that this obviously doesn't meet the standards for SGC zoning as residential and commercial. Unfortunately, the planning department, we believe should have rejected the application straight away, but it hasn't. The design has been around and with the city for a number of months now. In fact, there's a email thread that says that the, from the planning department, it says in the past, they've approved similar developments with work with units in commercial space and SGC. So they will likely approve this application and the neighbors will immediately appeal it. To avoid the messiness of the comprehensive plan and municipal code, we need, I believe, and we believe the neighbors, we need to have more specifics about what commercial use is and is such as the proportion of square feet given a building reserved for commercial use that work from home or live work don't qualify, that a tenant manager who's using a unit is not a commercial use. And more specifics about construction design, as far as it relates from residential versus commercial unit. SGC was intended always, and I remember this from way back, to be a mixed residential and commercial. We're now on a path to become whatever, what it was never intended to be. Just townhomes, our condominiums apartment, no associated businesses, so badly needed for the long-term health well-being of our city. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, Jeff, you may. Can you clarify, is this, is this being built under R U V?
No, it's not, it's, it's presumably going, it's still in, in the works at the planning department, but it's going to be a type three CSDB. Which of course creates a whole bunch of appeal issues for citizens like us. But we have done this before, we've appealed one proposal in 2015 and another one in 2021. So twice we fought this successfully and here it is again. And if you saw the size of this lot and where this property, where the building footprint will be less than 25 feet from the cliff, and I call it a cliff because it is a cliff. It's pitched at 90 degrees, 80 degrees and is 90 feet deep. And they're going to be less than, they'll be about 30 feet away from. You know, we have pictures of the landslide, and actually I pictured, I have to print out the first floor if you'd like to see.
Yeah, we passed this one.
Sure.
Does anybody have questions of Mr. Stink?
This is the same developer?
No, 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 the developer, original developer sold to, but it's a long course of transactions, but it's now developer headquartered in Vancouver, Canada. I have one development, I believe that's in Seattle, it's a small development, those floor plans. Let me point out, here's the work area, this is one floor, there's two more floors.
Thank you so much for making a comment and bringing it to our attention. And while this isn't the right format for us to be able to respond in many ways.
Oh, sure.
Definitely circle back and figure out what it is we can do. Thank you for bringing for attention, there's something that is certainly going to be important in the comp planning, which we have some vague discussion, yeah. Thank you so much. Okay, who else in the room?
Hello, my name is Sarah Phillips, I am the Chair of the Climate Action Committee. And this is my colleague, Miriam, we're a team with Austin, we're the Climate Action Committee. We're very excited to be here, we are close to having a report. We have sort of, we, we wrote it on Google, on Google Drive, so 10 of us editing. So the problem that arose was voice. And so we have now decided to hire a consultant to help us get that final product out the door, but it's very close. And we anticipate that it will be done February 28th. And that we will go to council in March. And it's what you would expect, there are really no surprises in this, in this, you know, there are a lot of greenhouse gas emissions and we're part of the community that has got too much greenhouse gas emissions. We need to figure out how to limit our flying, driving, building, refrigeration and garbage, I guess are the categories. We're interested in sort of describing the problem and then figuring out how we build resiliency within the community. There's, there's nothing we can do right now that will stop the impacts of already climate. So how do we mitigate and then how do we build resiliency? So those are our three issues. I just want to show, we have two fabulous things happening. One is we're going to have a graphics novel version of the climate action. Developed and the other is that we hired a young man named Austin who did the murals on he had a part to develop a character for us. Kokony or some sort or another, I don't know, Ken the Kokony. We really don't want it to be Charlie the Tuna, but something around it. So, so we're going to be ready with something and our question, right, I'm coming to you with a question. And that is, how, now what? We want to be part of the integration of these issues into the comp plan, but it's unclear to me how to do that. So I just came here to throw that. How do we, and I think that's part of you Christina, how do we, what's the format? How do we make sure that the insights that we have created and are part of this report get into yours? How do we, so it's just perplexing to us what the next step is. One of the things we want to do maybe is have a conversation, a Zoom conversation with a couple of, with Maddie and maybe David, talking about what, maybe Christina, talking about what, how do we do that? But it's a, I think that, we don't even know the structure of it. And if you're, if the structure is the same as other, so we want to be, and the other thing is, I just want to say, at one point you offered to sort of let us preview our report to the council. We might take you up on that if that offer stays on the table, just sort of what, what we're talking about and where we go and get some feedback from you before we actually present it, we wouldn't already have everything. Just one, that's another thing that we were thinking about doing. Really, we have to figure this out, so we have, as we are, as we're moving into the next phase, we see three, four things happening, one is coordination with planning commission, the other is public education. What kind of legislation do we need to follow, legislation we need to find? And then how do we pay our report to the council?
Very good. Mind, does anybody have any questions? Okay, I know that's not typical, but I just like, we have some work to do together and it seems as good a time as any, just to pose any optica. I just wanted to request a couple of things for us, it would be really nice if we could see any draft material even before our presentation and that way, those of us that, you know, can make some time, we'll have a chance to digest that before we're presenting cold a presentation, I think we'll be better partners with you on feedback. And then as, hopefully as part of an, maybe an outcome of your work is to figure out, when you look at the body of your report overall, what would be a handful of policy recommendations you would as a group want to see in the revised comp plan, right? We're not moving into code, just general regulations, it's really setting policy updates. And so it might be nice while you are working together to think about what would you recommend to us and by extension to the council as policy additions to the comp plan.
So is your sense that the format of the climate element will just mirror the climate, the elements of all the other? I mean, if we wanted to be able to figure out what those findings and recommendations might be, is there a format?
I, I don't think we've had a chance to discuss that, but I, I would guess, knowing, you know, something about our work at hand, that if Christina, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is going to be, is their work is going to inform many different sections of the comp plan, even if it does have a called out section, is that?
No, that, that's, that's absolutely right. We expect climate policies to appear in a number of elements in addition to having the standalone climate planning element. And to, to a certain degree, what that looks like at this stage depends a little bit on whether or not we are awarded the climate planning grant, which I haven't heard any, anything else about at this point in time. So we'll, we'll go probably mirroring the climate action plan closely for the climate element. If we are not awarded that grant, if we are awarded that grant, then there's kind of a lengthier process that is specified for putting together climate elements that we would follow and we would use what we can from the climate action plan to inform all of those steps, but it's likely that we would be adding new analysis and material.
I just want, I thought maybe this would be helpful, so today we're doing land use. And right here under link 10, here is climate commitment and it just says placeholder for climate policies. So this would be a place where if you had any suggestions for land use, climate policies, they would be put in right here. Is it, or I'm working on case 15. So that's just one of the elements that we're working on, so there will probably be in lots of different ones.
I have a question, have you guys had a chance to look at the comp plan, just kind of like how it's organized? Because I think that's, just even taking a step back further, we're, we're tackling it by the different sections, which is organized through categories of land use, which, which Commissioner Robate's talked about. And then we'll be looking at the other categories, transportation, public works and so on. And if, if you guys could familiarize yourself with this document, then, then it would make it so much easier to see how climate change could, policies could be inserted into the different categories that comprise this document.
In addition to that, your side, there's our side, right? So I think as soon as you make that presentation, we'll have a better idea what you guys are opposing and be able to, you know, think about what we're addressing. I think that, I think that February 28th date is key, is pivotal to, you know, developing that partnership between planning commission and the units.
It's a nice document to be familiar with, but we would ask you to go through it or rewrite it. It's more just, when you reflect on your own work, you know, what are a handful of elements you definitely want to see at a policy level in the comp plan? And we can talk about that offline too, if you like.
Okay, well, it's not as dense, I don't think it's that dense, I don't, it looks intimidating, but it's, it's actually very.
I, in my experience, you might even find the comp plan to be, sometimes policies can be unsatisfyingly nonspecific. So it's like kind of general statements, lots of shoulds, like the city should do these things. And so my guess is that some of what you're producing will fit perfectly into the comp plan. Other things might be kind of code development recommendations or kind of program, you know, recommendations, things that the city should do or pursue or encourage. So I'm not saying you need to write three different reports, but if we, but it would be good to maybe sit down and whether it's with a consultant or city staff to kind of think about how you could, with the least amount of extra work, kind of say, here's some things that we think might, you know, fit kind of this policy type document. And here are some things that maybe don't go there, but they, but they need to be recommended as, you know, on specific code areas or something like that. So you might need a, might benefit from having somebody kind of look at it with you who hasn't written it, but to kind of help filter things a little bit, so. But first of all, I really appreciate what, what you're all doing.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Yeah, we're going to have a good time, right?
One additional comment, my understanding, Ms. Hayward, at the last commission meeting distinguished between goals and, and policy. I think that conversation is really important to understand, you know, just what does policy mean? So I, I know that the, Mr. Holland, I know that the video wasn't posted just quite yet of the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, there was some typical problem, okay, yeah, so, yeah, but we're getting into that. But as soon as that is, I think that's useful information.
And that is that the comp plan is not code, it's policy that helps direct where we should be developing code, but you certainly want to anchor for the good work you've done in the, in that policy document. So that when we get to code development, we have that as a touchstone that helps direct us. We can, we can talk over, I'm always down for talking, okay? All right, anybody, any other comments, anyone online? Jonathan? All right, Jonathan, we're coming for you. Does, does he need to come up mute or is he even elevated?
Does he need to be elevated, just?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jonathan. Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, great, good evening commissioners, my name is Jonathan Lounds. I am a King County Government Affairs Manager at the Master Builders Association of King and Snohomie Counties in Bellevue. I'm here to urge your support of middle housing and infill development and the comprehensive plan update. So allowing for middle housing, encouraging infill redevelopment strategies, foster diversity, equity and inclusion by revitalizing urban spaces, providing affordable housing options and creating inclusive communities that reflect and accommodate the needs of a diverse population. Additionally, I provided a letter requesting clarification on the draft land use element of the comp plan in table I2 regarding zoning designation RS 9.6 and 10. Current, the current text suggests a lower density, which seems contrary to the goals of a higher density development in those sections. We appreciate the support of the planning commission and the city staff's efforts in tackling the housing issues. Your dedication and finding effective solutions is commendable and we're grateful for your consideration of these changes and we're ready to assist in any way to facilitate informed decision-making. Thank you so much commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Lounds. We're just, we're just seeing your, your letter right now too.
It's okay, that's okay, I worried too, but it was pretty good, so.
Yeah, all right, so all of us have it in our inbox?
No, just, just.
Oh, okay, thank you. Super, that might be good for Christina next too, but yeah, I think it's pretty standard, yes. All right, anybody else, any other public comment? Seeing that, let's move along to our report from our council liaison, Councilmember Bodie, what say you? And Happy New Year.
Happy New Year all. It is going to be a busy 2024, I think. Even not just the planning commission, but throughout the city and certainly for the council. So we start 2024 with two new council members and. Uh, so we start twenty twenty four with uh, two new council members and a new mayor. Uh, and and a new community development director. Welcome. And uh, uh, so our first official meeting will be um, this Thursday. When we have a working session and and a full council meeting. At that meeting will be um, the council members will be selecting. Uh, the deputy mayor, who is the chair of the council, a vice chair for the council, a budget committee chair and vice chair. As well as um, uh, kind of confirming different um, regional group participants. For example, Sound Cities or the Ballenger Forum, the Lake Ballenger Forum, to give you an example of things where. We'll be identifying who uh, is going to do those. I expect to continue to be liaison to the Parks Board. And the, and the planning commission. Uh, and uh, so uh, that's, that's not going to. Change at least as far as I know, unless my colleagues would tell me to to stop doing it, but I don't anticipate that. Um, so just a, just a heads up that there's a lot going on. Um, there will be an inauguration ceremony. At the Civic Club on February third, probably. We don't have the time yet, probably five thirty or so. Um, to, even though council members have been sworn in, this would be kind of the official celebration of the newly electeds. And um, let's see what else. The lakefront park. Uh, process is going full steam ahead and there will be. Uh, a new community workshop to go over specific options based on the feedback at the last workshop. Uh, that will be held, I think it's February twenty first. Uh, don't hold me to that, but I think that's when it will be. It will be a similar approach and format to, for those of you who went to the previous workshop. Um, that process is moving right along. You may recall that we um. We need to get it done in time to apply for uh, state funding grants that are on two year cycles. So if we miss this cycle in the spring, we would miss the funding opportunity. I think you know, we adopted the reasonable use uh, exception uh, code provisions. That were recommended by the planning commission previously. We um, postponed final action on the sign ordinance. So that will be coming up despite the fact that planning commission recommendations were quite some time ago. That will be coming up. And the, I just, I'd assume in the first quarter of this year. There are lots of topics that the council will be taking up. We have to develop our new budget this year. We're dealing with speed limit and traffic camera issues. We're dealing with sound transit uh, issues. Uh, which continue to be um, challenging because the communication and engagement is poor. And uh, the latest council letter, which was sent October thirtieth. And it was a majority decision by the council to send that letter. Um, it still has not been responded to. Um, by sound transit, which is kind of usual. Uh, council member Foratani and I asked that because the. A previous board member was from Kenmore and that representative was not reelected. Uh, council member Foratani and I asked that Lake Forest Park get a seat on the sound transit board because. North End cities and small cities are not well represented. And um, for those of you who may subscribe to the sound transit news. We did not get anywhere with that. And so the new council members, the new sound transit board members. Are from King County, Seattle and the mayor of Redmond. So uh, anyway, maybe that's too much detail on sound transit, but it's news that just broke this week. Um, any questions or thoughts?
I think we're, I think we don't have any questions tonight.
That's good. Um, stay tuned. There is a lot more to come this month. Uh. Uh, I am sure. Oh, I don't know if any of you saw the notice. We, we did successfully. Cause it is a very long process, hire a new police officer. So look for that news. Uh, if you, um, if you subscribe or take a look at our website and see who our new police officer is.
Councilmember, you also mentioned at our last meeting that there was a potential uh, an ordinance in front of you for. The option for neighborhoods to um, request parking permits. And what happened with that issue?
Uh, we had a long uh, discussion. It's had, it had, that ordinance had many touches um. Over time and we had a discussion and adopted that. Uh, ordinance at our very last council meeting for twenty twenty three. So there is now a process if um, down the road, we have parking congestion issues. Associated with the lakefront park or sound transit, um, bus stops or anything for that matter. Um, then uh, seventy percent of the neighbors um, can, can uh, petition. For a residential permit parking program. The hours and details of that program are flexible. Depending on the particular condition, parking uh, conflict or pressure uh, that is seen in that area. And the timing of it. So uh, we're, I think uh, that the council as a whole. Was happy to adopt that so that we have it in place. And as questions come up from the community about what we can, what the opportunities are if traffic congests, parking congestion results. We have a tool. Um, so it's just a tool in the toolbox at this point. There are no areas designated um, and no. Expectation right this minute that um, different neighborhoods are going to come in with a petition.
Thank you very much. Okay, um.
What is the process? So is that on our website or um, just we wanted to find out more about it?
Yeah, do we have to dive into the code, uh, council member, or is that being uh, shared through a newsletter or something?
Uh. I can ask that it be shared in the newsletter. Right now it's just uh, in the code adoption. But if that's a request, I can certainly turn around and ask our city clerk to put uh, out a, a notice as part of our. You know, social media and email notification system. So would you like that?
Yeah, I think that'd be useful. Uh, last time she mentioned that there you had to have a certain number of signatures. So, yeah, I think that would be good to communicate.
Yeah, the key elements I think are are pretty simple and straightforward. So it, it does lend itself to a short blurb. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, Christina, I think we'll move on to the next part of our agenda, but I would love if uh, just for everybody's sake. So that we can make it through our agenda and have enough time to talk about the other two items. If maybe we. Had an ability to move through this first item, uh, maybe by eight twenty.
Will do my very best.
It's just a target, just a.
I, I hear you. I know our discussions have been quite lengthy in the past. Um, trying something different this time with some very specific prompts. Uh, in my slides, uh, and I'm hoping that we can um, uh, keep, keep a quicker pace. So.
Sound equal for sure.
Uh, are you, are you ready for me to launch my presentation and off we go? All right.
Thank you.
Um, and if I do have my slides up and you want to give me a time check, please, please do. I won't be able to see the clock as easily. Uh, while I've got my, my screen share on.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so here we are, January ninth, twenty twenty four. Uh, the comp plan is due by the end of this year. Uh, so I'm glad that we are um, working with a full team now. Welcome to Mark, who I know has done some amazing work. Around the region. I'm really excited to have him on board. Uh, and happy new year to all of you as well. Uh, okay. Today is my first day back from two weeks off, so bear with me uh, while we, while we work through this. Um, all right, tonight's meeting, I'm gonna talk through a little bit of schedule revision uh, that has become necessary. And we're gonna talk a little bit about the land use element, which uh, you received uh, in your packet tonight. And then uh, we're gonna be. We're gonna be moving on to the environmental quality element. Uh, technically, transportation was on the agenda, but that is kind of the crux of the schedule revision. So looking ahead, uh, Fair and Peers has gotten a little bit later start than they had originally anticipated. Uh, so I'm proposing essentially flip flopping environmental quality and transportation. Um, if for whatever reason, transportation is not able to come up in our February meeting. Then maybe this would be a really good time to start talking about how to adapt the climate action plan for. Uh, for use in the comprehensive plan. Uh, so heads up that that might uh, might be a change that we see looking forward. And I'll try and make sure we get a little bit more notice out than that uh, on that so that, that you all can be prepared. Looking beyond that, uh, March and April, May, June, the rest of the, the schedule is pretty, pretty full. Um, so we're gonna need to, to be pretty conscious of how much time we're taking on these discussions. Um, March is when we should see Leland Consulting Group back to talk a little bit more about housing. And this is where we are likely to talk about some of the middle housing policies.
Um, Kristina, can you pause for one second? I, can everybody? Yeah, you're fading out on something, so I wanna see if we can adjust the volume in the room. We're missing a little bit of what you're saying. I mean, Nick isn't because his ears work better. Um, do you have volume?
Uh, any more of this?
Christina, can you do a sound check with us?
Is this any better?
Maybe, just maybe be aware that uh, to project a tiny bit.
Okay, let me, uh, I'll see if I can turn up my input. Just bear with me one moment.
That's our.
Okay.
All right, I can't turn, I can't turn my microphone up any further. So if you're still having trouble hearing me, uh, let me know. I'll try and speak a little bit louder. Um, all right, so long story short, we've got a pretty full schedule for the rest of the year. Um, we should be seeing Leland coming back in March, uh, and then be prepared to uh, do. A, a pretty heavy lift in uh, April, May and June. If we, for whatever reason, are having some difficulty getting through all of our topics in a timely fashion. We may have the ability to extend planning commission by about a month, although I, I uh, believe you guys typically like to take a summer break. If I remember right. Um, so we may, we may wanna explore some additional meetings, uh, depending on, depending on how. How we're able to move through our topics. Uh, with that, we'll dive right into tonight's topic. Um, and just as a reminder, uh, and thank you for, for the, the. Kind of uh, heads up on, on this coming back. Uh, but this is the, the framework that we talked about last time. I just wanted to. Kind of give a, a refresher as we continue to work through. So uh, remember that goals are very high level. Um, rather vague statements that get at how the community vision starts to. Uh, become more of a reality. Policies become more specific and start to identify the steps that are needed. To make those goals possible. Actions are what we're talking about when we talk about implementation. So these are very specific steps that you could hand someone and they would, they would know what to do with that. With that statement versus policies would need some further development into actions to be able to fully implement them. So it's kind of an inverted pyramid that goes from more general to very specific. Um, and then again, a reminder about what our objectives are. Uh, we uh, overall need to achieve regulatory compliance with the Growth Management Act. And some of the recent legislation that has come out with the King County countywide planning policies and with PSRC's Vision twenty fifty. We also want to make sure as we're doing that, that we are responding to the community vision values and priorities that are pretty clearly laid out in the vision statement. Uh, and those include balancing environmental preservation, economic vitality and residential neighborhoods, supporting diverse cultures and perspectives across the city. Creating a very vibrant town center that functions as the heart of the community and ensuring that our residential neighborhoods are safe and well connected. With that, uh, you should have a copy of uh, red line markup of the land use element. And that includes both the element and the appendix. They're um, in the same, they're in the same document. Uh, so just to check, check the heading uh, when you get to the, the blank page about halfway through. Uh, uh, here's a quick summary of the revisions that we're proposing. The key changes in the element itself are. Um, uh, word choice updates that uh. Kind of address some of the diversity, equity and inclusion uh, topics that we discussed last time. So moving, moving away from uh, historically uh, difficult language to something that is. More broadly inclusive. Um, and then we have proposed some land use designation table changes. This would um, more clearly support middle housing by removing some of the, the typology specific statements. Uh, and I've got a question about how that reads to you all a little bit later. Uh, but it focuses a little bit more on density uh, versus the, the specific type of building that might be allowed there. Um, I did add a placeholder section for some future middle housing related land use policies. Um, most of those policies, we do expect to wind up in the housing element, but we want to make sure that we have some. Uh, some land use policy space available for the, for those. Uh, I've also created new goal, uh, LU dash ten climate commitment and have some proposed language there for discussion tonight. Uh, and then a placeholder to add some additional land use related climate and policies under that. Uh, and then finally identified a few actions that I would like to relocate to an implementation chapter. Uh, in the future and wanted some feedback on that as well. Uh, the, the appendix information is largely just an update on the demographics and the housing targets. Uh, sorry, housing allocations that were provided by King County. And we talked about the, the demographic profile last time, uh, but if you have any corrections or feedback on that, please do let me know. All right, so discussion topics for the land use section. Uh, item number one is the phrasing of character descriptors. So I mentioned we focused a little bit more on. Uh, density or intensity versus typology. So I believe Mr. Mr. Lounds had pointed out, we've struck. A single family and put low density in its place because it really speaks to um, more of the, the developed character. Of that district uh, versus restricting even at a policy level, the kinds of buildings that might go there. So that. That frees up a little bit more room to explore some different kinds of housing options. Uh, or different kinds of land use options more broadly and was wondering how that is landing for you all as you're considering that. Uh, keeping in mind, of course, that this is um, policy level that uh, if we were going to be allowing any kind of middle housing. That that would appear in the development regulations, but this is the policy guidance that supports that kind of regulation update.
I guess, uh, I'll chime in that I, I like the goals of some of the word changing. But I think one thing that maybe caught Mr. Lounds's attention too is that now we, some of the. Some of the naming of these categories now kind of first read seems a little contradictory. So we've got low density residential mod high. Right? And it sounds a little bit weird, but I think the goal is correct. I appreciate. The striking single family uh, out of the, the title, but. Maybe we, we should think a little bit about how to, how to make the naming a little more um, intuitive with respect to the density. But other than that, I, I like the, the cleanup language myself.
Okay, that's some great feedback. I, I agree. I think that that was um. Uh, that that was maybe uh, not as, not as fully fleshed out as perhaps it should have been. Not as, not as fully fleshed out as perhaps it should have been. And we can, we can definitely provide a little bit more clarity on that.
What, what was the rationale for naming one, uh, low, moderate, then moderate, high and high?
So the, if you look at the implementing zones, you'll see, uh, things like RS, uh, 10 RS 9.6. RM. I forget all, all of the specific numbers, but those correspond to the, the approximate lot sizes in thousands of square feet. So you have a gradation of single family residential. Land use designations and they're, they're implementing zoning, uh, designation and then multifamily where you start to see higher intensity uses. So within the single family grouping, you have some lower density, some moderate density and some higher density. That's comparative within the single family designation group. Those are all lower density or lower intensity than any of the multifamily residential classifications.
I, I guess my, my question was like under the multi-unit low, you name 20 units per acre, but there's no quantity as, as a parameter there. And so what drives the definition of what low, moderate and high in a. Low density residential area. I'm just trying to connect the dots.
That's the lot size per unit, which is the number in the right column.
Say a per unit, right?
No, on the right, RM 2400, those are all lot size per unit.
Yes, so if you have, if you have a big number like RS 20, um, that's a 20,000 square foot lot, so call it a half acre lot. So that's a, the lowest.
I understand that, but we're taking away the term single and we also know the states requiring us to put. A minimum or allow for a minimum of two. So I think I, I was, I think I have some confusion over. Where quantity comes in on, in terms of units per. You know, lot size that's distinguished on the right hand column. Can somebody ask that better than me or am I?
Let me take a stab at answering it because I thought about it. So, for example, right now, if you take, let's just take the example Christina brought up of the RS 20,000. So that's our biggest one. So that's, that's a minimum parcel size. In theory, it's not actually true on the ground, but it's, it's the minimum parcel size. What the state's saying is we need to allow at least two units on that parcel. It's not telling us we can or should subdivide that parcel any smaller, so the minimum lot size stays 20,000 unless we change that. But now there would be two units available. So you can, that same logic applies to these other numbers as well on the multifamily. It's, if you, if you read it in the code, it's more about. The minimum total lot size per unit that you plan to put on it and that's what these numbers are. We may need to. Adjust that, you know, some of this nomenclature when we wrestle with the middle housing and what we're recommending. Because it, it might become even less intuitive than it is now, but that's, that's what it means at the moment.
Okay, so we're taking out the word single, which would tell the reader that a single unit is allowed on. Whether it's a RS 20 or an RS 7200, the single designation tells you it's a single home. But what tells you that it's? A maximum of two or four or whatever? Is that coming out at the code level? Like, that'd be the only thing if removing quantity from the label. Creates confusion of. Yeah, go ahead. So I think they're, they're taking away the word single so that it, it implies that there's more than one home. Or one unit on that property. So now it's low density saying that it can be. A duplex or it can be another unit on that property. So then you get to where it's multi-unit low and I think that that means it says that target is not to exceed 20 unit per acre. So I think that means that that's the low density you want to consider it, but it's, it's a multi. Like an apartment, I, I'm, I'm assuming, but it can't be more than 20 units. And then where you have multi-unit high, that sounds like that it is mixed use. So that it can have like maybe storefronts on the bottom and then the units are up on top. I get all, yes, I'm saying we're taking away quantity designation and the only one that has a quantity designation now is the multi-unit low. And I was just curious what the implications were of that.
If that category has the 20 and no other category has that. You can massage that as you go forward as Johnny suggested, because the actual number resides on the zoning map in the zoning code. Which is all due to possible lack of that, like June of 2025. But what you need to do here with the same families implement the policy so that in June 2025, you're not going back.
So this is not where we would say, uh, low density. Low moderate, low density residential, low moderate would have a maximum of two. Housing units on it. Top plan, we would do that in the code.
Yeah, the policy would have a range and a typology and, and once you have that defined, zoning map could have three, four and seven. Designations with those numbers implementing that one land use category. I, I think Christina, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're also kind of pointing out that. Part of the language change is to get away from focusing on families, right? And that single family, multifamily kind of it, it's. It sets this perception that this is about families and there are lots of households that are not. So I think that's part of the language cleanup too.
Yeah, there's, it's, it is serving multiple purposes. We are, we are trying to set the stage to consider a, a variety of, of housing types in. Any of these designations. Um, and, and to, to Maddie's point, and I think, um, Mark's input is as well. The actual regulations for implementing this are still in the code. So when we're talking about how we want. Uh, to, to limit the number of units per lot, that's in the code. This allows differentiation between different housing types as it, as we're currently proposing it. So allowing it to go, uh, beyond a single family house, uh, to, to have a, a greater range of options if that's what the city decides is. Appropriate for the vision. Um, so this is, we're, we're seeing this, um, it, as a way of opening up options, but it doesn't specifically in and of itself. Authorize a number of units or, uh, a specific density or intensity of use. Um, it ge, it gives a, a greater range of options for each of the categories.
That helps. Thank you. We can move on.
I'll just, I know that this is not going to be the. From, but anyway, I'm sad to see family leave the document because I do think that that reflects. I do think that that is reflective of our community and I feel that it's a negative word. And so I think unit, it's very cold. It's not, uh, you know, partisan.
And I say we can't hear on the phone. Art's here.
Sorry, I was just, I was just saying that I just wanted to make the statement that I'm sad to see family be stricken from the, from the document. And I think that unit is a colder and less humane word.
It almost, uh, takes, excludes that diversity from the scheme. My family is part of the diversity, right? By excluding that word, it takes away from.
The unit doesn't cover anybody. I mean, that, that doesn't, that's not a household word. I would even like word household better than unit.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate your comments, Meredith. I, I don't know that they're super popular all the time, but I appreciate you making them and, and I would agree with that. As well, it, it, it loses the, the warmth, in my opinion.
Christina, what, what, uh, i- is there any other, does anybody, uh, do any? Other commissioners have a feeling about the word family or household? Being omitted from this language?
I feel like you're not going to make everybody happy with this one.
I don't think this is used quite. I, I think it's very confusing. Uh, uh, maybe it's the format. But I felt it was cold and just so rigid too, but. And you know, perhaps it is the loss of the word family, but the, the way it read was. Yeah, just the, the document was very sterile and very rigid and, um. You know, I, I guess for me, I, I, I think Lake Forest Park is very creative and, uh. You know, it just, it's, it is, it is a war. The document should reflect who we are and. I just couldn't identify with the language, but I understand there are state requirements, um, but if you can. I don't know, beautify this. I mean, I, I appreciate what you're doing, Christina. That's why it's, it's hard to comment on it, but that was just the takeaway. Sense and.
I'll just throw this here. I don't know, because there were, there were, it seemed to be. You know, solving two problems. So we went from single family to low density. So that's kind of talking about the, how many. You know, but then we also have the single family, the whole family being struck and replaced with the unit. So there's two different things and I think I'm less. The, the low density totally makes sense. I think the, you know, single family or, or multifamily going to multi-unit. Is the one that really, you know, felt, uh. Hit home with me.
Can we just use the word household instead?
I, I think the challenge is that what the, I, I think Christina, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I don't disagree with you. But what I recognize in terms of a language standpoint is we're trying to develop parameters for buildings. And so, um, and there can be many families that live in one single family dwelling unit or there can, and so I. I don't have a good answer. I, I, I agree with what you're saying, yet at the same time, I'm like, wait, what are we, are we trying to govern like family size or how like? Because that can be limiting too. And so I don't, I don't have a better word than unit, but.
What about domicile?
Right, you know, I, I. I was just trying to think about what's most inclusive, right? Multiple families living in one single. Yeah, yeah.
Can we use the term household?
I, I mean, I don't think that there's anything wrong with that. I. If, honestly, if, if you feel very strongly about keeping family in there, I also don't think that that's something that will make or break. The, the document. Um, so if that's something that you think is extremely important. And adds to the, the. I guess the human touch of the document, then I, we could revert to, uh, for, for the, the multi-unit. We could revert to multifamily on that. And I, I think that that would be, I think that that would be fine.
Alright, um, is there any more discussion on that? I appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner. Okay, well, can I just say one more thing? Maybe we don't just strike family out of everything. Maybe we can stick it in there here and there. Because it seems like there's some area that it sounds better as single family instead of single unit. You know, well, that doesn't have to be like. I think so, it'd be low density family.
There are two things that it has to have is the use and the intensity. So if you go to a model of residential, commercial, mixed use. Or basic like that, that may solve your problem, they still need intensity. So if you want to be more generic or less friendly, you would use residential. But what, one of the goals of doing this change is to get away from single family. So that you need to at least achieve that, but then you could flag it as an issue and deal with the other. Categories of your discussion. And I'll add one more thing. You also need to be consistent with the definitions of RCW. Unless they are not consistent, they, RCW, the developers staff doesn't know what that means. But somewhere in there is things.
I, I know we're restricted for time, but the other sticking point for me was the repeating of such as accessory or mother-in-law dwelling. Here, such as dwelling units, duplexes, et cetera. Uh, that kept coming up over and over again. Is there a way to kind of, um, put an asterisk and, and put it on the bottom so it just reads cleaner to that just. It sounds so bureaucratic. I mean, we're, it's already such a bureaucratic thing, you know, the density and the intensity, but. To not lead with, uh, so much redundancy there.
Yeah, we can abbreviate that.
I should say, you've done a good job in taking away single family or single, the word single. So that's, that's great. You know, that's, that that intention, right?
Okay.
Where we can put a pin on this is that maybe to check the RCW for compliance with, you know, consistency and definitions. And, um, before we officially adopt this, we can revisit, you know. Once we're aligned with everything, figure out if we have some latitude to make those changes, but like, can, can I just signal that with you or can we signal that with you now Christina? That we'll put a pin in that and, uh, make a decision about that. Any changes relative to family or household at another time?
Yes.
So the question is, how do we capture that as an action?
I wrote it down in my notes. And I'm sure Nick is going to make a note as well.
Yes, but you're right. It needs to stay on a, it's a, we call it a parking lot of ideas. So it's going at the, in the first car at the parking lot.
Good plan. Um, okay, so we, we've only got about 13 minutes left. Are there, would you like to continue going through these discussion topics or do you want to turn attention to environmental quality? And get started on that element? I feel like the phrasing of the character descriptors is probably the largest question that I had. Uh, and then any feedback on the, how I've phrased the, the climate commitment goal, the new goal there would be the, the second one. That I would really like to focus on, but I'm also okay deferring that to when we start discussion of climate. And so I'll, I'll leave it up to you guys.
I'm so sorry. I'm having a hard time hearing you like to track where we're at here on your list.
I'm so sorry. I don't know why this is so problematic tonight.
Sure, it's my hearing. I should probably go have it checked, but. I, it, it sounds like you were recommending that maybe we skip through some things and move to the climate commitment. Is that what you said?
In, well, in the interest of time, uh, we could turn to environmental quality. The, the other biggest question on this list I'm showing right now for me is discussing the new climate commitment goal. But I can't, I would be happy to defer that until, uh, we start talking about climate in more detail.
Does anybody?
I just think in the spirit of moving toward, so that Christina can continue with the word. We should go with your plan, Christine.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so moving on to climate for now and then we'll bring back some revisions. To, or some suggestions for revisions on the land use designation. If anybody else has any feedback. Send it to, I guess to Mark, uh, or Nick, uh, and they can pass it along to me. And we can incorporate that into our next draft. Okay. So with that, let's go back to the presentation. Alright. So the environmental quality element introduction. Uh, just like last time, we'll talk a little bit about the findings and recommendations from when we did our initial review. Starting with the King County countywide planning policies. The, the 2015, it says, I'm so sorry, 2015 environmental quality element is generally, uh, consistent with. The King County CPPs. As with last time, this is going to be true of across the board for the King County CPPs.
I'm sorry, I, Christina, I'm sorry. It is really hard. I, I know David and I are having trouble hearing you and so I don't know. Is anybody else having trouble? We need to go sit next to, yeah, we continue to have audio quality issues in the room.
I'm really sorry.
Oh, yeah, we're fine on that.
Oh, yeah, we're fine online.
I, I can hear you.
Great, yeah.
So maybe it's your guys' speaker.
I, I think it's, it must be somehow the speaker of the room. It's coming off the TV and it's like, I don't know if the models. Yeah, something, I mean, I hate to ask you to do this, but could you just maybe speak at a slightly higher volume?
Um, I need to relocate to a different part of my house, uh, but yes, I will try that. All right, one moment.
No, it hasn't. Yeah.
They have a train here, like. So it's possible that the settings were changed.
Yeah, I, it's.
Okay. I'm going to try and speak as loudly as possible from here. Uh, and I'm, I'm so sorry. I can't turn my, I can't turn my microphone up any further, so.
It's something in the room. I apologize.
Okay, um, if I start to peter out, just remind me to, to raise my voice. Okay, so by and large, the, the 2015 environmental quality element is pretty consistent with the King County CPPs. Um, as with all of the King County CPPs, there is a new emphasis both on diversity, equity and inclusion, and generally in, on public health, um, in, in as much as supporting individual healthy actions, uh, et cetera. Um, so some, some new requirements from the King County CPPs for local jurisdictions within King County are to incorporate climate action mitigation and resilience into the comprehensive plan. And they have provided some guidance on that. Uh, that's something that I think we'll dig into a little bit, once we, a, a little bit further, once we start our work on the climate element. Uh, but know that this is also a place where we're going to expect to see a new climate goal and some placeholder language related to that. Um, and then also ensuring equitable access to a clean and healthy environment. And that includes identifying, mitigating and correcting for unavoidable negative impacts of public actions that could have disproportionate impact on Black Indigenous, people of color, low income and other, uh, what King County calls frontline communities. Um, some things that we can consider as we're going through our update are implementing environmental planning strategies using integrated and interdisciplinary approaches. So what this would look like in Lake Forest Park is, uh, kind of a little bit more of a tweak to some of the languages that you already have in your goals and policies, uh, to expand the strategies, uh, descriptors a little bit. Um, expanding the use of low impact development approaches in several sections of your goals and policies. Uh, clarifying and also potentially expanding some sustainable energy goals, uh, related to demand reduction, uh, energy management technology and meeting needs through sustainable sources. So you touch a little bit on alternative energy right now, but that could be expanded. Um, and then also prioritizing equity in the preservation and enhancement of forest canopy, uh, with potentially an implementation action that would be, uh, an update to the community forest management plan. Um, and this is really, uh, compliance with the King County CPPs is really where most of our work is going to be. Um, the, the vision 2050, uh, has some very similar overlapping, uh, goal language for compliance. Uh, we could talk about expanding support for environmental stewardship on private and public lands. That's something that is very clearly in line with how the goals and policies are already written and what the vision is and what the community values are. Uh, so we, we would maybe make a few word changes here just to, just to kind of elevate that a little further. But, um, I don't think that there would be any changes coming out of this. Uh, and then environmental quality is not a required element in the GMA. So there's nothing that came out of our GMA checklist, uh, for environmental quality, uh, that we need to change. Aside from that, we do have some additional recommendations. Um, this is, uh, a pretty extensive element in the comp plan. And we saw some opportunities to, to maybe consolidate some goals and policies in, in a couple of categories. So, um, there are two goals related to wildlife, one addressing coexistence and one addressing wildlife habitat. Um, critical areas protections are kind of spread out in a few different places. So we, we could consider consolidating those. Uh, and then of course, uh, climate planning policies, there are some already. Uh, they might end up consolidated into a new climate planning goal. And then considering how to prioritize diversity, equity and inclusion throughout our work. Um, how maybe BIPOC, low income or other frontline communities can be prioritized when we're talking about public investments. Uh, and, and if there could be potentially some policy language related to considering uh, diversity, equity and inclusion when making funding decisions. Uh, and perhaps considering incentives to improve environmental outcomes for these frontline communities. Uh, and then finally, you're likely to see, uh, some edits related to streamlining goals and policies to, to reduce redundancy and, and tighten things up a little bit to, to make a little bit more room uh, for some of the, some of the new additions. Um, like climate and, and some of the other things that we talked about related to King County CPPs. Does anyone have any concerns about anything for environmental quality uh, that, that I've talked about so far tonight? Or anything that anybody wants to make sure that I'm not missing or forgetting as we go through our first draft update?
Yes, I would flag one thing, which is that, um, I see a need to also kind of integrate some of the new elements in environmental quality around equity and public health with the, the parks part of our comprehensive plan, um, which is really devoid of that. Our parks, uh, section is mainly about active parks, trails, um, having resources to buy parks. It's all good. But what I've seen working on the comp plan in the, in the county is really thinking about public health and access to green space, which is typically dealt with, or the green space part is typically in your parks part of your plan. It's really integrating that with equity. So looking at the access to green spaces, especially in underserved urban areas. So I just think we're gonna want to probably crosswalk also with this environmental quality element and the parks element. Um, so I just want to flag that. That's not something we need to tackle tonight, but there's some, I think there's been a lot of good thinking and advancement around how to think about urban green spaces and their public health value. And I think we'd be missing an opportunity if we don't try to knit those two goal areas together in the plan.
I so appreciate that. Um, I, I had intended to talk about that a little bit more, uh, with the, the parks, um, parks, recreation, trails element. Uh, but you're, you're absolutely right. That is something that's mentioned. Uh, kind of a, across the board, um, as, as something that is critically important for supporting public health and for supporting these communities that have historically, um, seen disinvestment and other kinds of, um, challenges. So, um, it's great to, to put a bug in everyone's ear and, uh, something that I, I would like folks to keep thinking about and that we will revisit, uh, when we talk about the parks planning section later this year.
Thank you.
Right, I have one minute left on my timer, so.
You have more. You have more. It was just a, a gentle guide to all of us.
I do want to make sure that you have time for all of your other business. Um, if anybody does have any, any other comments related to environmental quality, uh, let me know now. Otherwise be prepared to see a markup next time for our suggestions. Uh, and, and we'll talk about it in more detail then.
Uh, Christina, my only feedback on this front would be that, that was my, that was my wondering is that we're slated to take on EQ in our next meeting. And this was a lot of information to take on, even if we would have spent twice as much time. Because we don't have this, this presentation. I know for me, I need to reflect on, on this as it comes. And so, uh, commissioners, we'll take that up in terms of like, what do we need to be better prepared so that we're not just, you know, reading language? I mean, my assumption is that our next meeting will have something similar to what we have this meeting in terms of a market copy without any time to like digest the great work that you just showed us. Is that?
Yes, I, I have been, I've been thinking about this, uh, doing my own reflection on this approach. And honestly, I'm not, I'm not sure that it is as successful as Steve and I had, had thought it would be. And I think it might end up making more sense for me to share, uh, kind of a, a rough markup for discussion purposes. So you would, you would have kind of an initial markup. Uh, we would talk about some of the changes that we're, we're suggesting. Um, any questions that have come up for us as we're, as we're doing the updates? And then we would bring back kind of a, a final version for, for any further discussion. Um, so if I'm able to work it out with my staff, uh, I think it's, we might try to, to front load them, the, the markup for reflection so that you guys can, can be a little bit better prepared for some of this initial discussion on each element.
Or just receive that information you, you shared with us, because as you shared it and then asked us if we had any sort of feedback aside from Commissioner. Yann, project, I, I. Um, I wrote it down. It, that I, there's no way I could give any feedback on it because that's just how my brain is. I need a chance to look at it. So maybe, you know, another process piece too, as if, you know, that information that you just shared with us was something that we could see in advance. Then we could use the meeting time to actually, you know, ask questions or, you know, make comment about it.
And, and I think that's what Christina is saying is that rather than giving us the final version of the markups, she'd give us the working version.
I agree, but I found there, that could be valuable to sort of see her, you know, breaking down of like, you know, what maybe needs to change and some questions we ask of ourselves, not just a market draft. Or is that what she presumed? She was still going to give us that there just?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I.
I could be wrong.
I really like this. Christina, I really like this format because it allowed us to look at it ahead of time and see kind of where you were headed with that. And then, uh, the only thing was that we spent so much time discussing it at our last meeting. But I think if we had this markup beforehand, like the next meeting, if we have a transportation markup, I think then using that time to discuss it and, and just kind of consolidating, um, that meeting into not only discussion item of the markup, but, yeah, but it gives us something, a, a hard copy, something to, to dig into.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm hearing is that we, we like, uh, some elements of this format. So, um, you, you'd like to, you'd like to continue having this, this level of background information, perhaps, uh, accompanying an early, like in the packet, instead of in the presentation, uh, accompanying an early, early draft markup and then going through the presentation at the meeting, being able to talk through the markup, get some initial reactions and come back with a, a final version.
What does that sound to? Ashton, Melissa, how does that sound?
I think that sounds good.
Thumbs up.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Christina.
Yeah, uh, totally happy to, to make that change. Sorry, I'm making, I'm writing some notes. Forget what we just talked about. Um, okay. Uh, and then other than that, so my last slide was just a discussion question.
Yes, thank you, Christina.
All right. Um, in that case, I am done for tonight and I will turn it back over to you all to finish your, your other business.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So it sounds like our action item is that if we have questions or feedback, so I'm just checking in with my, about these markups, we should email those to you to share with Christina. And that prior to our next meeting, we will get not only this slide presentation of her very sort of analysis, but a marked and popping. Are we all on the same page?
Yeah, I am a little bit sad to not have, like, you know, the discussion. Because let's just say that I send the suggestion and totally he doesn't like it. And that's okay, you know, or, or then I didn't know that, oh, you thought that too, or nobody else thought that, or. So I almost think that this is kind of the core of how we can actually.
One method would be to send them all to the chair and then have that evaluation be done by the chair and not snap.
Well, I'm not, I mean, I'm not saying anything negative about.
No, but I mean, it would save that. And so I was, one of two things can happen. If, if it's better to go through Nick, then Nick can reflect it as, or Christina can reflect it as comment for all of our consideration. Or sure, you're welcome to send it to me and I can look at where, we did that with the town center planning, where we then actually used a, like a spreadsheet with all of the items so we could see where people were like, check and find. Excellent, more conversation.
Okay.
And so that was kind of useful.
And you could have that discussion because it very well, maybe you have three comments in the left section that go in there.
Right.
Could be possibly third.
Yeah, we shouldn't do that.
My only concern was that just with like, if we follow this format that we're taking right now, it takes three meetings to cover one category.
Absolutely.
That's why if we could actually have the documents, then we could actually take one meeting, we all look at it, see where her head's at. And then we can actually have that opportunity to comment. I mean, because you're right, we weren't able to comment, we just moved barrel into environment, but at least if we have where her head's at, where your thoughts are, we know.
Yeah.
Does that?
Well, that's where I got confused because I'm like, wait, we're moving on. We just barely got into this one, you know?
Yeah, a hundred percent, but so.
I think moving forward, that's the plan.
Correct, is that, that's my.
We're just talking about discard document.
Yeah.
That will.
Well, for this current document, oh, go ahead, Ashton.
Oh, I, I, sorry to be redundant, but I think I'm, I'm agreeing with everything that's going on in the room. Because if I could get it just a little bit ahead of time, like, like some of you, I, I take a little bit of time to really marinate on things and, and think them through. And honestly, I talk about them with my, with my household, with my family. Um, so we can get a little bit ahead of time. And I think we can have maybe a little bit more pinpointed at, um, immediate discussion rather than just reactions. But it sounds like that's the plan going forward. So that's awesome. Thank you.
Perfect, yeah. And just to underscore that, it would give us a chance to think about or look up information like, what does the RCW say about family versus household versus unit? And, and so that there is a more of a sense of closure versus let's put it in and then so we have a chance to look it up. So. Okay, um, I would say.
Question, and this relates the process. I'm looking at our timeline and I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time imagining that, um, with the meetings that we, I mean, we want to use the consultant's time really well, right?
Right.
But it doesn't give us necessarily enough time to discuss. So I'm just curious if we should be talking about additional meetings or longer meetings where there's kind of working meeting type? Where it's us and the staff crunching through detailed stuff and really digging into some language. Because there's some, I think there's some pretty important stuff in here that we're gonna need some time around it. So I just wanted to put that out there and say.
Yeah, I would be very concerned if this was all that we got for this. And then it was just, boom, all right, next.
Okay, then that moves us into our second agenda item, which is, is this. Which is to say, if you look at the schedule that she's laid out, and even if we're getting this material in advance, I mean, we'd be really lucky, even if, even if we would have had all this material and the time and space with nothing else on our agenda to go through just this language. Uh, there's really not very much time to have a meaningful discussion where, you know, we're planning in advance for the conversation. This is more like one item to derail the meeting. You know, but by, by finding a process whereby we can flag things that we want to talk about in advance and actually have time scheduled to talk about that, I think will, um, very positively influence the end product we come up with, but I do think it's going to require extra meetings. So with that, um, I know I've talked with some of you about, you know, where your interests lie. But we have, uh, Christina's schedule of when she expects to bring things to us. And I'd like us to consider when and where we'll need extra time, knowing that we, like, we can't get that facilities, you know, information right now. That's too far in advance, right? Like, how, how can we balance what we can get from Christina with, you know, uh, the extra time we need for, for that conversation? Right? It'd be hard to have a conversation before we know some of the recommendations Christina's proposing.
In a perfect world, it'd be great to have a meeting as soon as we get the document from Christina, right? And then that proceeds, then she takes that information back, gives us that revised.
Agreed.
So that we can discuss that in the next meeting.
Right, so she is providing us, she's provided us with sort of an analysis on what we might consider for EQ. And I wonder if that, that information is enough to sponsor a conversation. And then our meeting with her is about recommended markups. Like then when we've had markups and we would know better where we stand and what, you know, ideally, if we were all to flag what we wanted to talk about, it'd be the same thing because we'd already know where we stand on that. Right?
I, I liked his idea of actually having a chance to churn the document. I, I like his idea of actually having a chance to churn the documents that she gives us before we meet so that we can actually have a unified front. But, but I think the biggest thinking point for us is the house, is the state's requirements. So I think that's really where. You know, that's why I, I know land use took a little bit longer, but we've got little housing coming up. We've got the, the climate. Stuff coming down pipeline, so. Uh, you know, I think, I think there's some topics that we could probably bulldoze over and maybe consolidate. I think transportation could be a big one too.
I mean, they all are. They both got climate, economic development, you know, service. I mean.
But yeah, I don't know. The, I, I think some of the, like, the EQ, maybe we could do more. There's less, I know that we could follow the CCP, the climate. But, but you know, there's, there's some that we could really put our personal input on. I think media ahead of time would be. I don't know, that's my two cents.
So, I mean, I could easily make the case for us to be. Twice a month and probably still feel like we have as much time as we need.
But. So we could do that twice a month and then if there's additional mini meeting that's required. One or two of us can take that.
How do you all feel about between now and June meeting twice a month? There's a lot of work to do that night, so in, in full. You know, acknowledgement, we have a lot of work to do on our own, just be prepared for these meetings, but how? How do your schedules and your sort of feelings?
I, I also think that it's going to be Christina providing us information that we need to go over, right? I don't know what her time schedule is as far as is she going to be able to get that work done. Even a week before our regular meeting.
Right.
I don't think we can expect her to have it a couple of weeks before. Right, so and then also the meeting room. I know there's other people that need and stuff and so, but I'm all for having extra meetings.
I think the key is your willingness to spend more time, meeting once a month, it's probably not going to get you to June. On track and comfortable. And there's the other element, you also need to do this in the light of day and share it with. Otherwise you're going to June that nobody will know what you did. And they need to buy it. But that said, do you have a new resource? We have to abide by the SCJ contract. I haven't read it yet, but we'll start that on Thursday. And utilize that resource to the greatest extent we can. But the new resources, we have facilities, we have need. On salary, as many times as you want to be, subcommittee, it's legislative. I prefer not to do it via email all week long necessarily, even though it is legislative. But there's that public element transparency. But we can organize and facilitate if you want to spend more time doing that in June. And it's better to have that commitment now than to be behind.
I think the other challenge too is the outreach to the community. Is something that we haven't started yet and it's. Challenging, I think, to. Do all the work we're going, I mean, we'll end up using community input ultimately to sort of validate or check our work. Versus inform our work just by the order of it unless you guys can see a way around that. You know, any survey information, it's almost like this would be useful to pass on to the council for consideration. But it's not going to come in in time for us to actually use it in a significant way to inform our work, so I just. Want to put that out there and see how everybody is feeling about that. Concerns or. Do you have an idea as to when we get a draft in the council?
Well, there, there's one element of, they need to honor that, that this is the commission's. But they also need to be made aware. So the tool I've been using is the, the weekly city manager updates to the council, so they're at least aware. And sharing the materials as they come in. But their role doesn't start until there's public hearing, a drought, a public comment, and you guys have essentially made a. Recommendation, then their formal role gets all that material, it starts over. Yeah, and they need to honor and respect the time they put in the contents.
Yeah, because I, I do think that it'd be nice to be able to have that public, you know, just have some sort of public survey or public dot, you know, input.
I don't know that we have any other choice, but would we all agree that given the circumstances that we will use the community input? To do, you know, a validation of the work we are doing. Because I don't think we can wait to do our work until we have that information. So are you comfortable with saying? Publicly, we value and need community input, but for our group, it's going to come in as a validation for the work we've done. And for council, it will come in as information to inform any, as you recall, for other things we've done, we need to flag. You know, if we're out of time, we can say, here's our body of work and we flag these things and encourage you to take them up for discussion in your own.
I think what I would add to that is some culture that so long as we're adequately avatar, letting the public know that this is going on. Right, in the city newsletter, whatever process that we're doing that, so long as we continuously.
So is that.
Invading the public interest.
Can ensure that it's in our.
I would assume it's already out.
Absolutely.
And I was gonna, yeah, it's like, these are public meetings, they know, you know, if they care enough to, they can see that you were discussing these issues or. They can show up and put in.
But it would be nice to put it in the next, like, four newsletters as a just.
We can, and that's easy enough.
Okay.
Yeah, but posted at third place too, so.
Shereen, were you trying to say something? No, no, I, I think it's a good idea. We could put it in the newsletter, okay. We might even put in there something along the line that we're. I'm streamlining what we're, what the comp plan was before and there's going to be some language changes. Just so the people are, that are aware of the old comp plan, they look at the new one and they're like, whoa, this is totally different than what we had before. You know?
Yeah.
Or just, yeah, just to, because I mean, the, the, the language is going to change, it's, it's going to change how it feels, it's going to change. You know?
I think you make a good point and I think that maybe that, that short message, if we've got to say what we're doing in two sentences or less, you know, it's just that. You know, state law has changed.
Yeah.
And we're required to update the policies that guide our city versus what, right, but like a rule our city, which is hoping. And I think we can discern that, just to say we're, we're meeting a legislative mandate.
And you're welcome to come, kind of put in your input. I mean, something along that lines of that is inviting.
Yeah.
You know, so that people are not, don't feel like they've been blindsided by.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, like.
We can maximize that because we don't want to get to the point where you're like, here's your draft. What do you think? And then they're just, let me open it.
Yeah.
But then the question becomes with that schedule and the, and the elements individualized. Let's say successfully get through a few of them. Are you willing to then take that working drought and post it as this is the. In the moment, this is where we're at on land use.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and keep sharing it so those that are interested can follow along the whole time.
And that's something we can look at here, maybe one of those meetings, we, we've had meetings beyond what. Were required to like a, not an official public hearing, but like a public comment, like the very specifically say. Come on and tell us what you think about this versus the general call, which is we, you know, we meet the first Tuesday of the. First Tuesday, second Tuesday, second Tuesday of the month, you know, come to any of our meetings, like we've done a special call out to say, come to this one though. You know, and let us know what you think about it. So I think that's doable. Okay, so an extra meet, just to move this conversation on, we need it, there's some things to figure out about when we can get material from Christina and. And so on, but, but just getting some meetings scheduled in, is that something that. You know, you all are willing to do is meet twice a month for the next five months?
And keeping in mind, if we want to have decisions at those extra meetings, it needs to be a call.
So again, are you all willing to? Yeah. I say aye. Yes, okay. Ashton, Melissa are willing to meet twice a month for the next six months?
That works for me.
Okay, so how do we want to schedule? I mean, we could spend a month just trying to schedule.
Yeah, that's, there's tools for the logistics. I think the start is where the city clerk usually be noticed. For special meetings.
But just finding it when we're always available and there's room, uh, room to meet, where you guys can meet. So what's the best way to coordinate? Meeting space, it's your time, our time. To make sure we have that forum.
It doesn't make sense that we meet at least before the meeting, before the, the schedule planning permission meeting.
I might even suggest to like to leave it two weeks.
If she could get it to us one week and then we could, you know, take the time to basically talk over the, this. This with each other and we could even do like this one and probably get two, you know, one hour for each one.
Uh, Christina, are you still listening in?
Yes, I'm here.
If, if we scheduled meetings that were a week to 10 days prior to our regular standing every, you know, second Tuesday of the month meeting. Would it be possible to get a draft markup to seed that conversation?
I think, I think so.
So like 10 days before our February meeting, 10 days before our March meeting.
10 days before the regular meeting or 10 days before your?
10 days, if, if it's 10 days before our regular meeting, it gives us a chance to read it, plan for that meeting with one another. Have the discussion and then get feedback to you within, say, five to seven days before our meeting with you.
Okay, yes.
And that I would think would allow us to have a much more targeted conversation with you. Versus leaving the burden of you like trying to carry all of it, you know. Forward to us at our monthly.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that and I. Also really appreciate the discussion that you all have had so far, trying to make this as productive as possible. So yes, I can commit to having. Materials to you 10 days in advance, that will include the kind of the early draft markup. Uh, and the slide deck that has some discussion questions listed. Where I would like your input and then of course, feel free to add your own discussion questions or bring them to the meeting.
Okay, that seems sensible, right?
One thing to consider is going to be the other committee meetings that occur the week before the regular planning meeting, so. I know having two meetings in the building is not ideal. But it can, it can happen, we just have to make sure that. It's, it's better to be consistent on the dates. Because climate action meets first. To each first Tuesday and the tree board meets first Wednesday. So those would be two meetings that are happening on those two consecutive days, the first week of the month.
And then how about Thursday?
Thursdays are council, yeah.
Fridays?
Was it, is it possible to have three meetings? I mean, I know it's. I think we could do it via, we just have to notice it, like, it's a virtual.
If our extra meeting is virtual only and are, I mean, it's lovely being in a room together, but.
But that's the only way.
But if that's the only way, I feel like we've got, we go to a tavern in the corner.
I would maybe ask these guys to take a look, they've heard what we want to do, sort of, and then look at the schedule, look at the logistics. See if it's possible to do it here and then we'll have to see if those dates work for us.
Right.
If not, we could go for virtual, that might give us more flexibility.
Yeah, I think so.
First Thursday, I, I think is over, so. I'm reading.
That's only a handful of days before.
It is, but. I mean, if you've got materials, then you can talk about it on that day.
That's true, and then she's only having to prepare one day extra as opposed to, you know. Or, or a few days extra as opposed to 10 days.
Yeah. If we got it on the first Thursday and share, right, so that would give. Christina, Friday. And Monday. I have a question, do we have to have you guys here for that meeting or like if I'm volunteered to do minutes, for example? But can we use, I mean, if it's on a date that.
I'll notice it, yeah.
We could use a different, different part of the facility.
Right, right.
You know?
As long as it's announced and they know, you know? There's form for the topic water.
Right, 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 but you know, maybe if that, maybe something to protect it for my time, how much?
For sure. Yeah, yeah, that's.
Even if we're in the same room. Doing it, that might help with some of that, but.
Yeah, but looking good.
Well, let us know, it sounds like, uh, we have a little bit of time, it sounds like for. The stuff we didn't get to talk about today, the land use stuff we didn't get to talk about, but that's drafted in hand that if we gave it the presentation. And the markup. We have what we need to have our next, right, session. And then we can move from there. Um, okay, so you'll follow up with us on whether or not we need. The B and C things and. Since most of us are here, is there, are there any fun issues, questions with the first Thursday evening of the month?
I, I, I think the ferry would come back, so the ferry system has been.
On that, on, on Thursday, on Thursday, so yeah, so I, I can't. So I don't know, but. Now Thursday's might be hard, okay, so and then. And, and then what about Tuesdays or Wednesdays? The first Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday of the month?
Tuesdays and Thursdays work for me.
Tuesdays and Thursdays, no Thursday.
Tuesdays work.
What about you?
Tuesdays versus.
Okay, all right, good. So scratch Wednesday, so if it's Tuesday, likely it's going to be virtual only. If it's Thursday, virtual for me. But also you could, so you would hang out just if you're.
Yeah, but right, and they'll affect the.
Okay. It sounds like we might be back in ourselves at some point or.
No, but I, I, but I mean, like, we don't want to actually schedule something that would exclude you. No, but I can certainly hear that we might have money.
That's a lot of.
For you to be on the go and have on the.
And we can shift the time a little bit too.
No, it's not horrible, but I just prepared. But are you saying like we could schedule it from like five to seven or six to, it doesn't mean it's hard anything. How, how do you feel about that? Do you prefer to stick with the seven to nine or would you want to? Sure. Earlier, earlier is better?
Earlier is better. I was gonna say, e- earlier is, is better. The only other thing too, again, I, I have a. Pretty sporadic travel schedule, but I can. Commit to at least being online. I'll certainly try and be in person whenever possible, but if I'm traveling, I'll just have to do it virtually.
Sounds like we could probably remote in if it's, if there's a couple of strangers.
Let's have Nick and Mark get back to us what the clerk says about what the, you know, requirements are, rooms and, and we'll go from there, but let's. Plan on sort of maybe a placeholder on our calendars for. Tuesdays. For now, let's try to hold on our calendars while we get this worked out. The first Tuesday and the first Thursday. Of each month. So let's see, the first Tuesday is the sixth, is that right? Yeah, February, so the sixth and the eighth.
Well, the, well, the first Thursday is actually the first.
You're right, you're right. Okay, that is, I'm saying the second case.
And we could try for the Thursday preceding the second Tuesday, right? Because then that's kind of what we were saying to Christine.
Yeah, okay, so for now, we want to hold the first and the sixth. And then after that, the first, the first Tuesday, first Thursday of each month. But we should be able to resolve this within a week or so.
Yeah, we'll start the conversation right away and the key, that, that takes it in May, that's essentially four extra meetings for you to. We're, we can still honor the contract.
Yeah.
See where you're at.
Okay, that sounds good.
June if you're still, still turning away.
I, I think we should schedule it. I mean, my, my sense is that it'd be better to. Say we don't need the meeting than to be trying to, you know, I'd rather get our. say we don't need the meeting than to be trying to, you know, I'd rather get our schedules held so we, you know, okay. Uh, all right, so we'll do that and, uh, yeah, that seems like a good plan. Are we missing anything on that? Um, I also had a question, um, in these sort of extra meetings, we've sort of identified how we would use this to have some conversations, but um, I think there's also this, this reality that a few of us had a, had a conversation about um, when we started thinking about more innovative policies, uh, that we might want to consider. I think we're missing some information that helps us be realistic in those discussions. For example, with low density development or with alternative development options besides the, the three standard housing types that are getting built, apartments, townhouses, the single family homes. Like, I know I don't have enough information to know like what the barriers to construction are of like cottage housing or you know, single level housing or building for, you know, small units versus two large units. Um, and I wondered what your appetite was for gathering information, um. Uh, there was an idea floated about maybe having a few builders come and meet with us to talk with us about, you know, the factors or the levers, you know, that, that help or hinder, you know, building in more innovative ways. So I'll just put that out there. Are there educational aspects, information that I need to seek out as a group to inform our work?
I guess, I think, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Oh, okay. I, I was just gonna say, I think that that's a fabulous idea and, you know, really the experience that I have is just building single family homes and that's a really limited scope. And if we're talking about having, you know, a diverse housing, having a better understanding of that is, is I think critical. So I, I love that idea. I mean, unless any of us are experts in that arena, I think seeking out, um, some, uh, some knowledge from outside people would be really great if we have the opportunity to do that.
And that's particularly with housing. So there, that's a question, whether or not we've got like a builder panel, uh, where we could ask some questions and dive into these, uh, topics. Are there other things like that? Given our schedule, uh, I don't think we can do this for everything, but what, what do you think's missing in terms of our knowledge base?
Well, I think the builder that's wanting to build here, um, with the six complex or whatever, I think that, that, they, he, this person is probably highly motivated, you know, to come and talk about his plan on something like this, see what, you know, like their thinking is when they're talking about building a whole complex like this.
And what might incentivize them to go some different?
Exactly.
So just like in the notes from last meeting, right? So, uh, Christina, so, uh, recommended or suggested a, um, implementation, a chapter, uh, implementation chapter. You said, um, that, uh, we need to discuss this and we would come back to the subject. So there's a lot of things that we haven't discussed in the last meetings that are in these notes that we've captured, but we haven't come back to them.
Right.
So some of those things I think would highlight where we need to provide more information.
Right.
Um, in addition to what you're saying, so I think if one of us could go back to this.
Absolutely, yeah. So we have to fit in time to discuss all of these things. And I think what I'm trying to elevate is of these kinds of things. And we don't have to solve them all for our February meeting, but we need to be thinking about what things we need back to, where we need more information, so that we're not stymied while we do come in for extra meeting and say, oh, I don't know, wouldn't it be nice if we knew that? Um, because we're gonna have to schedule all of those in to our conversation in addition to the topic at hand, whether it's E Q or, you know, climate or housing or, or whatever. So, so you're right. Would you like to take that on to sort of elevate?
You know, I, I would like to share that on there. That's, that's, uh, action item.
Okay, um, how about, I'll go through, uh, I'll take last meeting.
Okay.
Want to take the meeting before that? Do you want to look at the meeting before that? So November's meeting?
Okay, so I'm just looking for.
In the minutes, anything that came up that we said we wanted more information or would come in back to talk with. And then I thought, have we already started in that, we think it's November.
I'm doing November.
You're doing November.
We should be one, so I should be doing October.
You should be doing October.
Yeah. December, David, uh, November.
Yeah, so I, I, you know, something that I would love, just an idea is if, if the city has a parcel that there, you know, we've been saying like, why isn't someone developing this parcel? And then to have four developers and, you know, I'm sure council would be interested in hearing just like, well, what's, what's going on? Like, why, why haven't you built anything? What can we do? That kind of thing.
And that kind of conversation might be a full other meeting because you wouldn't want to say, hey, we want you to talk for fifteen minutes and then stop because then we'd need to go over the transportation.
And maybe it isn't directly related to the conflict because maybe it's not. I don't know if it's going to be something that we're going to be able to, maybe that's really for the.
There may be more development code.
Yeah, code, exactly.
And House Bill eleven ten, which we have more time for. I guess, uh, the way I'm thinking about this idea, you know, having these additional meetings that maybe, let's say they're about two hours or whatever, like these ones are. Maybe half of them, half of the time, we're kind of focused on the upcoming meeting, looking at materials we've gotten from Christina and the other part of the consultant team, kind of prepping for the meeting. And the other is kind of a deep dive into some topic that we, like, I could, I could think of several already off the top of my head. We've kind of mentioned a few. And, you know, so maybe if we were to all of us give some thought to what are some topics that are clearly related, like, I'll just give an example, because I don't know that our consultants are going to be able to really guide us here, but I think it's something our community is going to expect us to say something about. You know, the House Bill eleven ten, they, they carved out this exemption, right? They said all these things about you need to allow duplexes. Oh, but if there's a designated critical area, it doesn't apply. And that's actually problematic. Um, and I was talking with, I mentioned to, uh, you at the last meeting that I've kind of convened just a group of, you know, friends and neighbors who I'm getting together with kind of once a month to talk about these things. And we, they were scratching their, their, oh, what? Like, if, if, if you're not lowering the level of environmental protection, why would you have a carve out? Just because there's a sliver of a steep slope or you're slightly approaching of a, you know, landslide hazard. They said, why, why is that a carve out? And I think that's a fair question because if, if we did do that, if we said, well, the state says we can, you know, leave those thirty percent of our parcels out of mix, that means we're not directing all this kind of duplex type growth onto the other neighborhoods. And is that fair? So things like that, where I think it is a policy question of do we want to take advantage of the state's opt out, you know, get out of jail free card or not? I think that's a good question for the community and for us.
I have to push back on that a little bit though. I don't see it as a get out of jail free card because we have other parts of our comp plan that we're on the hook for in terms of environmental quality and and the, the environment that, that.
Right, so the subject matter of the conversation.
Right.
And the pros and cons, because there's pros and cons to everything. Be honest about, these are the cons and the pros, and you know, then we have to make a choice.
We just, we just went through that reusable use process too, and that was a great, a great frustration because we realized that even though it's designated critical areas, we cannot take away somebody's right to build their land. And so, you know, this is, you know, so here we have, you know, this policy, how do we wrestle with the fact that, uh, like, I can't remember exactly, but there is an overlay map. You're right, that we have a lot of, um, potentially developable lands, but if you look at the, the critical areas mapped and laid on top of it, it's, I want to say it's like seventy percent of it. It's deep slopes everywhere.
So if you look at what, and so we've agreed that we're going to have an extra meeting, and if you look at what we're queued up for each month, there's enough content alone in that to take up two hours plus. And so where we're thinking there might be extra topics we want to dig into that aren't part of our discussion of these things, but background. Um, would each of you maybe email me in the next week, the topics that you're, want to propose, let's acknowledge that it's likely yet another meeting if we're to stay true to this decision we've already made that we need that time to discuss this. And I can consolidate that into a, um, you know, a single list that we can do some voting on, um, and just agree like what we're going to make space for and what we just don't have the time to do as a group that we'll need to do, you know, on our own.
Thank you, man. That's, uh, that's, yeah.
So, so that would be great. Um, uh, Yanni, if you would send your ideas.
A topic in a sentence that explains it.
Yeah, like I think it would be worth our time to have a meeting to better understand this, you know, to, to develop background on this. Um, okay, I'm gonna, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. I, I just wanted to, um, you know, I, for me, like, sometimes we get into these discussions and we really lose focus of the, the topic at hand and so. Uh, but, uh, if we could just really, um, you, you know, really centered around the, the copies that I think that Christina gives us, and it can really kind of help us really focus on and reflect the duty, I mean, these are not, we are not creating implementation and, or action items. These are truly goals and all this needs and and kind of overarching things that we're, so, uh, I would hate for us to go down these rabbit trails, but if we could really center the discussion.
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm interested in, in, but we do have to be honest about limitations of our time and our, you know, so maybe.
Our first priority is better to.
Yeah, really.
But if there, if there is background, and, and it may be some of that background we push to once we get to code development. And we say that for the comp plan, we're gonna, we're gonna push it down the road. We'll, we'll see. If you'll send me your ideas, we'll prioritize that. I am aware that now we're two minutes past and, and I, I, another item on our list is certainly the land acknowledgement. I know there's been some, desire for us to beat that back up. And so I guess we've before we decide if we're going to do it right now or not, would you rather spend a little more time this evening and tackle that? Is that a, is it a long conversation or would you rather push it, you know, for another meeting? Again.
Or it could be one of these special topics.
And I just moved to, to, to scratch that last line to, to, and then I love the land.
Yeah, it was never supposed to be part of the read a lot. It was, it was material that was kept at the bottom of the agenda and the top was, it ended with today. It ended with today and that.
Right, can we just make it simple and just move to that?
Yeah.
And then just, is that everybody's supposed to. Uh, in doing this, we aim to only make a longer history than this last one.
Exactly.
Is that, is that okay with y'all or?
So Melissa and Ashton, did you hear, uh, uh, Commissioner Lee's, uh, request?
Yeah, to, to end the statement where it says today.
So originally, yeah, originally the land acknowledgement was just supposed to end with today. We had kept the rest of that as material that appeared at the bottom of the agenda as just a footnote. Um, and so we can, um, we can eliminate it altogether or we can move back to, I don't know why it ever got moved up to the top, but be, before we start discussion though, I want to check in with everybody. Would you rather spend ten minutes and, and bring resolution to this topic or would you like to push it to another meeting? I don't want to hold you for a pasta chair. Are you okay on this thing?
Is there a second to Commissioner's motion?
I don't think, I want, before we take a motion, I just want to make everybody sit and stay.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, yeah. Okay, hey Siri, set a timer for ten minutes. Okay, Ashton. Ashton and, uh, Melissa, are you able to stay on ten minutes?
I can stay on an extra ten minutes, that's fine.
Okay, so, uh, Commissioner Lee made a motion to strike it or move it?
Strike it.
Strike it. Strike that from our land acknowledgement. Any, I second it. Okay, any discussion on striking versus striking it?
Could we just read it without? Can you just read it without?
Yeah, of course.
Um, we'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than ten thousand years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today.
So I guess since I'm the one who raised this issue in my first meeting, um, I, I don't have any problem with that, that, that edit. But that doesn't fully get at my question, which is how do we, how does this commission, and again, per Mr. Ottman, I only joined in October, September, I don't know when my first meeting was, so recently.
At the beginning.
And my, my issue is not with the choice of words, but with not having been here when the words were selected. I wanted to understand how this commission intends this statement to inform our work. Like, why are we saying, why is this group saying it? So to put a sharper point on it, how are we using these words as we're updating this document? Like, where does that come in? If we're not explicitly using this principle, then I'm not sure why we read it. And again, I'm coming from a place of some of these who've worked with tribes a lot and do to this day every week in one way or another. So that's where, that's where I'm at. And, and I'm just curious what people think about it. Should we, you know, should we be, as we make recommendations or decisions, should we, you know, have a routine of thinking back, is there something here that we should be reflecting on? Land acknowledgement and the role of tribes here today. You know, or should we be reaching out to tribes to more, to get specific impact, uh, sorry, input um, from tribes on some of the things we're recommending? I mean, those are all avenues. I just, I'm really uncomfortable with the words if they feel empty and I feel like if we don't do anything with them, then it feels a little empty, even though the words are nice. And I don't, I really don't mind these words and I also support striking the second sentence.
Where, did, did anybody go back and listen to the conversation that, that the commissioners at that time had had about this?
I read some of the notes, but it wasn't, it wasn't just that.
We covered this and having been the person who, um, who recommended that we do this, I'll just share very briefly the purpose because I think your questions are fair and you're right. There's not like a broader document that says, you know, here's the, like, you know, two pages describing the what, why and so forth. Um, I had brought this to the commission out of, uh, frustration that as a city that has the values that we do, particularly around equity and diversity and inclusion, that that it was kind of the elephant in the room that as stewards of this land, we weren't acknowledging the displacement of people who had lived here for thousands of years and that that even on our city site, there's nothing that we're doing to sort of say, hey, who he recognized this place we call home, um, was, uh, belonged to others for a deep, long history and the, the work and life they lived on the land is, is, is part of our history. And so I thought it was important to lead up in the city by saying, hey, as the Biden commission, the stewards, you know, of the land, let's set an example for our city as a starting place so that at every meeting, somebody might say, I wonder why they read that or I haven't thought about that or I didn't even stop and think of, you know, people will come to this differently, but if it could spark wondering as to what the words mean, why we're doing it, that it, it could be the beginning of making sure that, um, indigenous communities are part of the waterfront part, uh, in its development and in its ceremonies and openings. I mean, like, it could just be the spark that allows us to develop a real relationship with indigenous communities um, for our area. So that was my intent was, was for it to serve as a spark. The second part was also a discussion, um, with the group. There were some people who were like, I don't know if we need that second part. And part of the reason why we put it at the bottom and weren't reading that, uh, but kept it was that I thought it offered important context in a very succinct way of why we were, why we had a land acknowledgement that was missing if we just had the first part. So that's the background from my point of view and it was my initiative and I'm very good to go with the majority, but I thought it was important that you heard my reasons why I brought it to the first place, why that last sentence exists and glad to move this anyway, you guys want to have four minutes and thirty-five seconds to do it.
No, thanks for, but.
But it's, I'm kind of my feelings, so you're welcome to have a conversation and we can have a vote. Or personally, uh, you know, when, when I went to my kids' band, uh, concert, they read it land acknowledgement. It just, it just kind of, everybody just kind of had this pause and it was just this moment of, it was just really beautiful and it just kind of stopped us in our tracks for that moment. And I really appreciated that. Uh, with that said, you know, I, I think we're always looking forward. I mean, me personally, uh, I'm always looking forward and, and I don't, you know, I know people when they look at, uh, places and places always evolving and growing and changing. And they talk about the past all the time. Um, we, we just have to accept that change is going to happen, you know, it's, you know, it's just, it's just this organic thing and it's all, and I think it's really important that we are always looking forward. That's me personally. But, uh, when that land acknowledgement is read, it just kind of goes, oh, and you know, it just kind of creates that kind of um, thread, that connection, which I, and, uh, but.
And but. I think I wrote a letter to everybody as to why I don't like the second part. But, you know, but just stopping for a moment and paying our respects to. You know, the native peoples because you you have, people don't realize some mamish, swamish, you know, all of these words that we have. In our vocabulary, the Pacific Northwest will do come from, you know, natives, people that were. I I like the land acknowledgement first. As as it stands.
I just want to make sure that Ashton and Melissa, you're having a chance to get in on this conversation. If you have any opinions that you'd like to share about this land acknowledgement and what we do with it moving forward.
I do want to say I like Lois's, the way that she described having sort of like that moment where everybody comes together before the meeting. I I really like that idea and it's a thing I also appreciate when I hear the land acknowledgement being read at public events. It's just sort of like this moment of of quiet and people coming together and maybe centering at least on the task at hand. I know that that, you know. To your point that, you know, how does this inform us as a group? I I I don't know that that it does, but I do like the idea of the land acknowledgement and just like taking that moment. To reflect as a group. I like the edits, though, to it. I I am fully supportive of removing that last section from the land acknowledgement.
I also, I I do appreciate it being brought up as a discussion point because I know, I think now I've been on this board for almost two years and it's been read. And and there hasn't been any discussion around it. That being said, there's, you know, a lot of new folks on the commission and I really do appreciate Maddie sharing where it came from. Because for me, it was it was more so just a statement. And now I have the meaning behind it, so I do appreciate it. I'm also in agreement that striking the the after today, I think that that reads better and is more in line with, I think, what the goal of this is. Now knowing that it's to create a spark and, yeah, appreciate it.
Does anybody else have comments about it? Any other discussion?
I appreciate the discussions, so thank you.
So we have a motion on the table and I'd like to make a friendly amendment. I don't, you don't have to help me know, Martha, negative, procedurally, this is right. The second sentence, as I described to you, it's it's reason for being there was sort of a purpose. And one of the heartburn things I feel about just deleting it is losing that very quick and easy way to signal to anybody in the community what its purposes. Could we take it away as part of the land acknowledgement and leave it as a footnote as a like. You know, why a land acknowledgement, question mark? And have that be more of an explanation as to why we have it. So a future commissioner could perhaps see this as a. This is why we have that to answer your question because right now it doesn't say it's a purpose, it just reads as part of the acknowledgement. So my friendly amendment would be to move that sentence to the bottom in response to a question that just says, why a land acknowledgement? And then. Keep the land acknowledgement as Lois proposed in her. Her proposal for. Motion for motion. Would you accept that friendly amendment?
Again, in my email, the problem is, is that the European American immigration that started in before the eighteen hundreds. The immigration is the legal recognition of citizenship. But there were a whole host group of people that were forced to come that were, did not have that legal recognition. Quite frankly, the diversity that we see today in America is a result of immigration laws that have changed over the last fifty years and so on. And that's why it it, I understand that the European American immigration only recognizes the legal status. Of European Americans, but in reality, the people that were here were, you know. There were lots of people here that were brought, there were Asian Americans, there were African Americans, there were Hispanic Americans from. And and so really, it's been very diverse from the beginning and it's.
I I see your point. I think I was looking at the people who had, who had commandeered the land.
Right, I. That again is the, it 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 deletes the recognition that so anybody else was here is the is the point that I was trying to make with that last statement. Because the reality is, is that it has been a diverse land and it has been populated by many people. But it's just been a legal status of whether or not you were recognized, that you can vote to own land, et cetera. Citizenship and these these. And and that's exactly what we were talking about with the D E I, the diversity and economic inclusion segment of of this. And so, and again, to delete the fact that, I mean, that's the whole point of the D E I. To to recognize that there has been groups of people that have been completely deleted from.
And so. They also weren't the people picking.
Correct, that's right.
So that was, I so I I agree with your point. I think this was just more to acknowledge that there was a very specific group of people. Who did that, but, okay, so no other friendly amendment. So then the motion that stands is just to delete the second line, so keep the land acknowledgement, but to delete the second line. And since our timer went off, if there's no discussion, then I'll I'll just say, is there a second to Lois? I don't think we seconded.
So should we, sorry, Commissioner, if I was seconded?
Oh, yes. All right, so then if there's no further discussion, we'll vote on Commissioner Lee's motion. All those in favor of Commissioner's leaves, motion to delete the final sentence of the current land acknowledgement, say aye.
Right.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, oppose. And with that, Commissioner Lee's motion passes. I know, but you didn't abstain, did you? For an example.
I do abstain, yeah.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of our agenda items of business. Is there any new business? Okay, any other, do we have anybody else online? That wants to comment? I don't know who the fourth person is. Okay, I think that we are ready for a motion for adjournment.
Second. Aye. Aye.
With that, we're adjourned. Thank you so much for staying extra time. It feels good to have gotten to our agenda, so I appreciate you. And we will look forward to hearing from you and Nick on when we can get together. If you go by email, yeah. Welcome again, Mar.
Yeah, welcome, yeah, you're not raving.
Thank you, take care.
Thanks, everybody. Do well.
Thank you.
The danger is that's going to be a vermin. Not yet a vermin, and so the cleanest way is for me and I not there to have anything to do with that public comment. I don't even know.